is now in session. Speaker M. Pinko. Laura Sander Klitsky, could we have a motion to adopt the agenda dated December twentieth?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the agenda dated s- excuse me, December twenty.
Um, could we have a motion to waive the, uh, the prayer and the singing of the anthem since we're just continuing from yesterday?
So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Without objection on both motions. There would be an objection to either motion, both motions carry. It is however, uh, the, uh, a very special day today. Uh, December twentieth, uh, is known far and wide for, for many things. And foremost among those things is that it is the birthday of who is undoubtedly the best looking member of the twenty-eighth Guam Legislature. A man who, uh, a man of distinction, of rugged good looks. Stands out in a crowd of basketball players, he still stands out. Uh, a man who, who needs no introduction, uh, because he always introduces himself. A, a man who, um, i- is going to be very missed in the twenty-ninth Guam Legislature since he chose not to run for reelection. It is his birthday and so I would like to ask, uh, I would like, like to ask the members who are present, uh, to please rise so that we can all join in a chorus or two or three or four or five or six of, of happy birthday to Senator Robert Klitsky. Senator M. Pinko, would you like to lead us?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bob. Happy birthday to you. May the good Lord bless you. May the dear Lord bless you. May the dear Lord bless Bob. Happy birthday to you.
And with, with the indulgence of the body, I would like to, uh, ask that we momentarily waive the, uh, the order of the agenda and ask Senator Klitsky to give us a birthday speech. And then we also ask that it last longer than three words. Senator Klitsky, please.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is going to be a very short speech. Thank you very much.
Somehow I knew that was gonna happen, I don't know why. Uh, roll call.
Senator Uggan. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator B. J. Cruz. Senator Mike Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Respecho. Senator Tenorio. Senator M. Pinko. Senator Wampad. Mr. Speaker, I wish to report there is a call.
Thank you very much. Senator Lujan, in the interest of practice, I'd like to have a motion for, uh, the approval of the Legislative Journal dated, uh, twelve nineteen oh six. Aye, aye, get up and make the motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the Jur- Legislative Journal dated twelve nineteen zero six.
On that motion, without objection, so ordered. Uh, there are no communications or petitions nor are there messages from a mainline going, but we do have reports of standing committees. Uh, Senator Lujan, on a motion to, uh, consider, uh, the standing committee reports to have been read and appended to the Daily Journal. Make that motion, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to accept the introduction of the, um, bills and resolutions and the first readings and resolutions. And, uh, be appended to the Journal, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, no problem with that. We'll, uh, we'll go ahead and proceed with that one, uh, on that motion, without objection, so ordered. Now on the reports of standing committees. Consider these reports of standing committees as being read and appended to the Daily Journal. That's item, uh, number one, item nine.
I move that the, uh, reports standing committees be read and, uh,
appended to the Daily Journal.
De- Daily Journal, Mr. Speaker.
All right. On that motion, without objection, that motion carries. We are now in motions, um, a motion to, um,
Get a substitute version.
Senator Lujan, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move to, um, approve, uh, any commendatory and, um, resolutions and consider it read. This legislative. Introduce and read this legislative body, Mr. Speaker.
On that motion, objection so ordered. Okay, there is no, there are no legislative concurrences, so we're at the top of second reading. Top of second reading, we have resolution number two oh one. Speaker M. Pinko. You're recognized.
Notwithstanding the House rules, Mr. Speaker, I, I move to, uh, uh, move resolution. Resolution, uh, two, two oh one to the, uh, bottom of the second reading file. Okay, uh, Mr. Speaker, I, I move that we place, uh, yeah, we place resolution two oh one on the, uh, bottom of the second reading file.
We're moving it to the bottom of second reading again? Okay, on that motion to place, uh, resolution number two oh one at the bottom of second reading, is there any objection? Objection, so ordered. We are now on bill number sixty-six. Uh, let's have a motion to, uh, that's already passed on the file too, so can we have a motion to place that at the bottom of second reading as well? Okay, there, on that motion without objection, so ordered. We are now on bill number three two eight. Senator Klitsky?
Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, bill three two eight is substituted on the floor. Be substituted for bill three two eight E.C.
We're gonna take, uh, one minute recess.
I thank you, Mr. Speaker. I believe that, uh, before we recessed, I asked that, uh, bill three twenty-eight is substituted on the floor, be substituted for bill three thirty-eight E.C.
Okay, and the motion is to accept the substitute version which was handed out for the purposes of discussion. Is there any objection to that? Objection, the motion carries. On a motion to place the substituted bill three two eight in third reading.
So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection to that motion? Without objection, motion carries. We are now on bill two two nine. Senator Casper, are you the author of bill two two nine? Augu? Senator Wampad, would you like to do the honors since Chairman's not here? There is a substitute version, so you have to move to accept.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, bill two two nine as substituted.
By the committee?
By the committee.
All right. On the motion to accept bill two two nine as substituted by the committee for the purposes of discussion, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. On the motion, uh, uh, a motion, please, to place bill two two nine E.C. as substituted by the committee on third reading.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place bill two two nine E.C. as substituted by the committee on third reading.
Is there any objection to that motion? Without objection, the motion carries. We are now on bill number, uh, someone had better go get Senator Klitsky real fast. Bill number three two two. L.S. Senator Klitsky, uh, do you wish to, uh, make the, do the honors or would you like to yield to the author?
I, I stepped out, Mr. Speaker. Which bill are we on?
Three twenty-two.
No, I, I would yield to the author on that one.
I don't think the author wants to be yielded to, so why don't you go and make the motions? It's only a motion to place in third, there's been no.
I'm, I'm hold the bill be placed in third reading, Mr. Speaker.
All right, there's a motion to place bill number three two two L.S. in third reading. You have to make an amendment. Okay, so on the motion to place in third reading, Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. It's a very minor amendment, but a very important one. Uh, I would like to, um, move to place Senator Judy Wampad as the second co-sponsor in bill three twenty-two.
Oh my goodness, okay. On that motion, without objection, without objection, so ordered. On the main motion to place the bill as amended in third reading?
Well, uh, this for a second, could oh, what, what basically is this, uh, Mr. Speaker?
One moment, please.
Uh, I, I would like to, to ask what is really, you know, the, the intent of this bill, this briefly.
Would you like to ask the author to yield to the question?
Yes.
Do you yield, Senator Brown?
Anytime, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, the question is, what is the intent of the bill? So, on that question.
Just to clarify, because I know there would be some concern with regards to citations and things of that nature, about five years ago, the legislature passed legislation that would authorize the Department of Agriculture to enter into agreement with the Superior Court of Guam to set up a citation program. Because prior to that, anyone caught with any type of violations within our fishing preserves, unfortunately, the only recourse that was left under the law was actually to arrest these individuals. And I'm sure we'll agree, in most cases, it might be an initial warning or a minor violation to the fishing preserves that would not, in most cases, require an individual to be arrested. And when you're arrested, you're booked, you go through the whole formal fingerprinting process and everything of that nature. So we're looking at the minor violations now as, at the request of both the Superior Court and Department of Agriculture to correct the language in here that would allow them to simply issue citations, very similar to a traffic ticket. So if it's a minor violation, the individual would be simply issued a citation which they would go to the court and either challenge it or pay the fine and we move on. But not require them to be arrested. Where now, even for minor violations, you are arrested and taken to the police precinct. So we're trying to minimize the adverse impact of, of that, because it's not been a very good thing for the community.
Speaker M. Pinko, does that satisfy your? Okay, on the motion to place the bill as amended in third reading, without objection, so ordered. We are now oh my goodness, uh, let's take a one minute recess. The legislature's, the led- the legislature's back in session. We're down on bill number two six seven, Senator Mike Cruz. Oh, he's on, he's right there. Senator Cruz, would you like to make a motion to place the bill in third reading?
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place bill two sixty-seven E.C. in third reading.
Yeah, on the motion to place bill number two sixty-seven. Two six seven. Do you have a substitute version?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, yes, I do.
I'm not seeing a substitute version, that's why I'm asking.
Mr. Speaker, I, I move to accept, uh, bill two sixty-seven E.C. as substit- substituted by the Health, the Health and Human Services Committee.
One, one minute recess.
There's a, it's the second one.
It's in the back?
Yes, the back. It's the, it's the, it's up to the one. Yeah.
Well. Okay. The legislature's back in session, there is a substitute version, um, part of the confusion is this thing is printed back and forth and back and forth.
Yes.
So it's, it's sometimes hard to follow where, where it is, but, but we do have substitute version, uh, so it does require a motion to accept the substitute version for purposes of discussion.
Mr. Speaker, I move to accept, uh, bill two sixty-seven as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services for purposes of discussion.
Okay, on that motion to accept bill number two six seven E.C. as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services for the purposes of discussion, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Now on a motion to place the bill as substituted in third reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move to place, uh, bill two sixty-seven, uh, as substituted by the Health, by the committee, uh, to the third reading file, please.
On that motion, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. We are now on bill we are now on bill doscientos setenta setenta. Doscientos. I do believe there is a substitute version that's been handed out separately, so first we need a motion to accept the substituted version. Uh, Senator Lujan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, motion to accept, uh, bill number two seventy-seven E.C. as substituted by the author and further substituted on the floor?
So this is the
Yes.
Yeah, this has been passed out. So this is the version that we'll be, uh, looking at.
As substituted by the author and further substituted on the floor.
On that motion to accept for the purposes of discussion, bill number two seven seven E.C. is substituted by the author and further substituted on the floor. Is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries.
Speaker, motion to place, uh, number bill, bill number two seventy-seven E.C. in third reading?
As substituted by the author.
As substituted by the author and further substituted on the floor.
All right, on that motion, without objection, the motion carries. Okay, Senator Calvo. Bill number three six nine L.S.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to move to, um, place bill number three six nine L.S. as amended by the Committee on Finance, Taxation and Commerce, uh, in the third reading.
First, first a motion to accept.
Oh, excuse, motion to accept, uh, bill three six nine L.S. as amended by the Committee on Finance, Taxation and Commerce.
Okay, as the bill has been amended by the committee, uh, motion to accept the amended version for purposes of discussion is in order. On that motion, is there any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Now, a motion to place three six nine as amended by the Committee on Finance, Taxation and Commerce in third.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move to place bill number three six nine L.S. as amended by the Committee on Finance, Taxation and Commerce in the third reading.
On that motion, without objection, motion carries. We will note that, uh, this is the second bill that the Birthday Boy has placed in third reading today. Okay, uh, the next bill is three six eight. I believe we have a substitute on this bill. Senator Lujan? Three six eight. Well, it's your committee, though. Okay, Senator Klitsky, would you like to make the, do the honors?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, thank you, thanks to the, uh, gentleman from Timoney for yielding. Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, bill three sixty-eight is substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Immigration, Labor and Housing be accepted for purposes of discussion.
All right, the motion is, uh, for bill number three six eight E.C. As substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Immigration, Labor and Housing to be accepted for purposes of discussion on that motion. No objection, motion carries.
Mr. Speaker, I move that bill three sixty-eight E.C. is substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Immigration, Labor and Housing be moved to third reading.
On that motion, without objection, the motion carries. Okay, we are now on b- bill number four zero two. That's now the third bill that the Birthday Boy has sent down to third reading. Moving a little faster? All right, let's take a, let's take a very brief recess then, so everybody can catch up. Bill four oh two.
As introduced, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that the legislature accept bill number four oh two E.C. as substituted by the Committee on Ed and Community Development.
Okay, the motion is to accept bill number four oh two as substituted for the purposes of discussion. Is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we place bill four oh two E.C. as substituted by the Committee on Ed and Community Development in the third reading file.
On that motion, without objection, motion carries. We are now on bill number three two one. Who is the, uh, author of three two one?
I am, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Casper, would you like to do the honors?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, um, Mr. Speaker, I move that bill number three twenty-one L.S. is substituted by the Committee on Criminal Justice, Public Safety, Youth and Foreign Affairs be accepted for discussion.
On that motion, without objection, so ordered.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that bill number three twenty-one L.S. is substituted by the Committee on Criminal Justice, Public Safety, Youth and Foreign Affairs be placed in third reading file.
On that motion, without objection, so ordered. Uh, we are now on bill number three eight two. Senator Casper, would you like to yield to the author or would you like to do the honors?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, although I chair the Committee on Education, the Community Development, I had the hearing on three eighty-two, I'd like to you, to the author, uh, to make the motions for introductions, Senator Wampad.
Senator Senator Wampad, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to accept bill number three eight two E.C.
Three s-
No, to accept.
There's no substitute.
Oh, there's no substitute version, right, so, so to place in third reading.
Motion is to, um,
As introduced.
Uh, just a little brief recess. Motion, the motion is to place bill three eight two in third reading. Any objection? Without objection, so ordered. We are now on bill number three six one. Senator Cruz. Senator Cruz, you are the Chair of the Committee, uh, of Oversight uh, for three six one having to do with pets. This is the pet bill. Uh, would you like to yield to Vice Speaker Brown?
Yes, I'd like to yield to the author.
Vice Speaker Brown, can you make the mo- the appropriate motions, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to bill, uh, place bill three six one, uh, in third reading.
On that motion, without objection. Motion carries. Um, we have, uh, exhausted the second reading file with the exception of those matters that were by motion placed at the bottom of second reading. Are we in a position to deal with those matters or shall we stop where we are? So we will, uh, we will, can I have a motion to, uh, leave second reading and to proceed to third reading for the purposes of voting?
Before you recognize?
Sure. All right, the Speaker's made a motion.
Okay, uh, I, I move that, uh, we go down to third reading, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, the motion is to go down to third reading for the purposes of voting. We will take a brief recess so the Sergeant Arms can call those senators that are not present. Uh, there's one who is not present and s- give, give that individual an opportunity to come and vote. Uh, also, we are in a situation where we have some bills that are engrossed from yesterday, but many bills that have not been engrossed, so could we have a motion to vote on those bills not yet engrossed? Mr. Speaker?
Yes, on all the bills that are now on third reading, Mr. Speaker, I move that, notwithstanding the House rules, that we vote on all the bills with all the engrossment.
Okay. The motion is that for those bills that might yet be engrossed, that we vote on them without engrossment. Without objection, that motion carries. We will take a, uh, brief recess while the Sergeant Arms tries to contact those senators who are not currently present to inform them that we will be voting shortly. Legislature's back in session, we're in third reading. Note the audio. It would be good if we were back on the Legislative Hall and not the, uh, not the public hearing room. Uh, remember that a lot of these things are not yet engrossed, so. Remember? We just passed twelve of them right now, so. Bill number three two three L.S. Roll call. The vote on bill number three two three. Fourteen years. Bill number three two three has been duly passed by the Mid- Middle East and Western Congress. Substitute bill number two five seven E.C.
On finance and taxation and amended on the floor introduced by Edward J. B. Calvo, Art Klitsky, Aaron Pinko and others, an act to repeal and reenact section twenty-two zero six and to amend section nine one zero one of title eighteen Guam Code annotated relative to the ownership of corporate stock and qualifications for directors of a corporation.
Roll call. Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes.
Okay.
Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Substitute Bill number two five seven E C. Fourteen yeas, zero nays. Uh, Bill number, Substitute Bill number two five seven E C has been duly passed by Minabit the Otsun listed on Guam. Substitute Bill number four.
Bill number four L S is substituted by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, and Commerce and amended on the floor, introduced by L. F. Casper Bauer, Ray Tenorio, Arum Pinko, and others. An act to add a new section seven one one nine to chapter seven of title seventeen with the Guam Code annotated relative to establishing standards for the purchase, installation, maintenance, and repair of air conditioning systems at Guam Public School System facilities.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes.
Okay.
Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Substitute Bill number four L S, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Uh, Substitute Bill number four L S has been duly adopt- passed by Minabit the Otsun listed on Guam. Substitute Bill number three eight eight E C.
Bill number three eight eight E C is substituted by the Committee on Calendar and as amended, introduced by Art Klitsky, F. B. Ogden Junior, J. M. S. Brown, and others. An act to amend section sixteen zero three of title one G C A, chapter sixteen, to allow the compiler of laws to provide a searchable database via the Internet.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Benjamin Cruz.
The vote on Substitute Bill number three eight eight E C, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute Bill number three eight eight E C has been duly passed by Minabit the Otsun listed on Guam. Three five seven? Substitute Bill number three five seven L S, this is the first one that hasn't been engrossed, so you won't find it in your folder. Substitute Bill number three five seven L S.
Bill number three five seven L S is substituted by the Committee on Judiciary Governmental Operations and Reorganization and amended, introduced by J. M. S. Brown, F. B. Ogden Junior, Edward J. B. Calvo, and others. An act to approve the Guam Power Authority and the Guam Waterworks Authority personnel rules and regulations governing the selection, compensation, promotion, performance evaluation disciplinary action, and terms and conditions of employment for certified technical and professional personnel.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Substitute Bill number three five seven L S, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute Bill number three five seven L S has been duly passed by Minabit the Otsun listed on Guam. On Substitute Bill number three four eight?
Bill number three four eight L S is substituted by the Committee on Judiciary Governmental Operations and Reorganization and amended on the floor, introduced by L. F. Casper Bauer, F. B. Ogden Junior, J. M. S. Brown, and others. An act to amend title seventeen G C A, chapter three, section three one zero four A, relative to the degree qualifications for the positions of superintendent and deputy superintendent of the Guam Public School System, and to amend title seventeen, chapter sixteen, section sixteen A one zero three A, relative to qualifying colleges and universities as foreign equivalents upon petition by superintendent applicant- applicants.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Substitute Bill number three four eight L S, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute Bill number three four eight L S has been duly passed by Minabit the Otsun listed on Guam. On s- Bill number two eight six.
Mister Speaker, I'm sorry, I missed it. Um, the authors as listed, I don't believe is what was passed in the motion on the floor.
I'm sorry?
The listed authors on the previous bill differ from what I believe was, uh, amendment on the floor.
Which bill are you talking about? Was this bill engrossed? Was three forty-eight engrossed? I'm just asking if three forty-eight was engrossed. I know. Pat, has the bill already been engrossed? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to reconsider the actions of legislature on the matter of Bill number three four eight, because the bill was engrossed, we cannot simply correct it.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I move that the, notwithstanding the rules of legislature, that we reconsider the action of the body on with regard to Bill three four eight as substituted.
Okay, do you wish to have three four eight remain in third reading, or would you like to s- put it back at the top of second reading?
Uh, Mister Speaker, I'd, I'd, um, move that we place it back on top of second reading.
Very well. On the motion to reconsider the actions of legis- I don't think it'd be automatic, would it, Mister Speaker, because we're still in third?
Mister Speaker, um, the, as far as the engrossment is concerned, um, well, the, the original version takes precedent in t- because they, it cannot be changed at all, so...
I understand.
All they need to do, the clerks and the, uh, legal counsel, is to make the correction.
The only thing I'm concerned about, Mister Speaker, is the bill was engrossed, it was panned it out in the current form, and that's the form we voted on. So I think that having voted on it in the current form, we cannot just by virtue of...
But by understanding rules too, Mister Speaker, it stated that, uh, the committee cannot change the order of the, uh...
I know, that's why I'm suggesting we go back to second reading, so that a motion can be entertained to change the... On this bill, we'll have to go back to second reading to change the, the order of...
I would think that it would be just, it just takes a point of order and clarification, and then, uh, the decision to be made by the, uh, Chair.
One minute recess. Larry?
Sorry, thought we had already done that.
We didn't vote on it yet, so... Could you just restate it one more time for the...
Um, notwithstanding the, um, rules of the legislature, I move to, uh, uh, ask the body to reconsider its actions on the matter of Bill three four eight L S as substituted. And to, um, place it back in second rea- top of second reading, top of second reading.
On that motion, without objection? Objection, so ordered. Uh, you, we could do that if you want. You want to do it right now? We can do it.
Just do it.
Okay, let's finish. Alright, uh, next bill is, is what? Did we just vote? Did we vote on two eighty-six yet? You sure? Bill two eighty-six.
Bill number two eight two L S is amended, introduced by L. F. Casper Bauer, Ray Tenorio, F. B. Ogden Junior, and others. An act to add a new section eight zero one two six to chapter eighty of title five, the Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing the Guam Public Labor System to procure DSL and cable lines to provide Internet access to its employees and patrons.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Bill number two eight six L S, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Bill number two eight six L S has been duly passed by Minabit the Otsun listed on Guam. Bill number three eight six.
Bill number three eight six E C is amended, introduced by J. M. S. Brown, F. B. Ogden Junior, Edward J. B. Calvo, and others. An act to approve the proposed amendment three to the customer service agreement power and C S A between the government of Guam and the United States Navy, which authorizes the transfer of additional land and power facilities.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat.
Uh, okay, the vote on Bill number three eight six E C, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Bill number three eight six E C has been duly passed by Minabit the Otsun listed on Guam. Bill number one five oh.
Bill number one five zero L S is amended, introduced by Ray Tenorio, L. F. Casper Bauer, J. T. Wampat, and others. An act to add a new section eight one zero four to chapter eight, division four, title two, Guam administrative rules and regulations relative to the transfer of old surplus and excess computers from all branches of the government of Guam to the government of Guam General Services Administration for further transfer to the Guam Public School System and the Guam Public Library.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Bill number one fifty L S, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Bill number one fifty L S has been duly passed by Minabit the Otsun listed on Guam. Substitute Bill number one two one E C.
Bill number one two one E C is substituted by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, and Commerce and amended, introduced by J. L. Lujan, Mike Cruz, F. B. Ogden, and others. An act to appeal and reenact chapter six of title eleven, Guam Code annotated relative to the licensing requirements for the retail and wholesale of tobacco products to add a new article six to chapter six of title eleven, Guam Code annotated to restrict importation of tobacco products to manufacturers, representatives, and to amend section two six six zero one C of chapter twenty-six of title eleven, Guam Code annotated relative to the tobacco tax.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes.
Okay.
Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Substitute Bill number one two one E C, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Uh, the, uh, Substitute Bill number one two one E C has been duly passed by Minabit the Otsun listed on Guam. On Substitute Bill number three two eight.
Bill number three two eight E C is substituted on the floor, introduced by Art Klitsky, Mark Forbes, J. M. S. Brown, and others. An act to deappropriate one hundred forty thousand dollars from the sums appropriated to the legislature. After reappropriates that sums, the, the every child is entitled an adequate public education fund.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casper Bauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lujan. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on Pinko. Senator Wampat.
Vote on substitute bill number three two eight LS, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute bill number three two eight LS has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. Substitute bill number two two nine.
Bill number two two nine EC is substituted by the Committee on Criminal Justice, Public Safety, Youth, and Foreign Affairs, introduced by J.T. Wampat, E.B. Palacios Senior, V.J. Cruz, and others. An act to add a new section, three one zero one point two, article one, chapter three, title sixteen, of the Guam Code Annotated Relative to Driver License Renewal Extension for Active Duty Military Personnel.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on substitute bill number two two nine, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute bill number two two nine EC has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. On bill number three two two.
Bill number three two two LS is amended, introduced by J.M.S. Brown, J.T. Wampat, and others. An act to amend title five GCA, section six zero one oh seven, to revise procedures for the effective prosecution of violations of Guam's Natural Resource Laws, but the issuance and citations and to provide that fines and penalties still recovered shall be deposited into the Wildlife Observational Fund.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes.
Pass. Vote again.
Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Speaker Forbes.
The vote on Bill three two two LS, zero yeas, fourteen nays. Oh, I'm sorry, fourteen yeas, zero nays. I got that backwards, excuse me. The vote on Bill number three two two LS, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Uh, Bill number three two two LS, uh, has been duly passed uh, because the Vice Speaker once said, by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. Substitute bill number two six seven.
Bill number two six seven EC is substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, introduced by Mike Cruz, M.D. Mark Forbes, V.J. Cruz, and others. An act to amend section eight two one zero one, article one, chapter eighty-two, division four, title ten, of the Guam Code Annotated to add section eight two six ten, article six, chapter eighty-two, division four, title ten, of the Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Framework of the Seclusion and Restraint Policy, Setting Restrictions and the Use of Fiscal Restraints on Persons with Mental Behavioral, Behavioral Difficulties and or Developmental Disabilities.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on substitute bill number two six seven EC, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute bill number two six seven EC has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. Substitute bill number two seven seven.
Bill number two seven seven EC is substituted by the author and further substituted on the floor, introduced by J.L. Lohan and others. An act to amend subsection A and B of section eleven oh eight, title twelve, Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Authority of the Board of Directors of the Antonio B. Wampat International Airport Authority, Guam to hang as controller and for other purposes.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Mike, Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat. Senator Ompinko. Speaker Ompinko.
Okay, uh, the vote on this thing, substitute bill number two seven seven EC, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute bill number two seven seven EC has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. Bill number three six nine.
Bill number three six nine LS is amended by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, and Commerce, introduced by Art Klitsky, Mark Forbes, and others. An act to add a new section, five eight zero eight, and amend section five one two one C and five two one one G, all of title five GCA, chapter five, article thirteen, relative to requiring the Chief Security Officer to ensure all bidders comply with the USDOL wage determination as detailed in title five GCA, chapter five, article thirteen.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Bill number three six nine, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Bill number three six nine EC has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. And, Bill number three six eight.
Bill number three six eight EC is substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Immigration, Labor, and Housing, introduced by Art Klitsky and others. An act to conform the Guam W rates and hour law to changes in the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act Regulations by amending title twenty-two GCA in se- section three one zero eight B, by re- by repealing the first four subsections of rule one of EO six one dash fourteen, under course funding sections entitled seventeen G.A.R., section four one zero one, deeming title seventeen G.A.R., division one, chapter four amended to conform to federal regulations on wage and hour issues, and also to require the Director of Labor to post these set laws on the DOL website.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on substitute bill number three six eight EC, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute bill number three six eight EC has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. Substitute bill number four oh two EC.
Bill number four zero two EC is substituted by the Committee on Education and Community Development, introduced by L.F. Casparbauer and others. An act to approve the revisions to the Administrative Rules and Regulations...
Mr. Speaker, uh, what about, uh, this point of order, Bill three six eight?
We just voted on it. Yeah. We just voted on three six eight, we're now on four oh two. We did three six nine, three six eight, we're now on four oh two. What did we skip? I don't think we skipped anything. We voted on three six nine, we voted on three six eight, and we're now on four oh two. A clerk, am, am I correct? There is no Bill three seventy in third reading. Continue. Did you read the title already, Pat? One four oh two? Uh, go ahead, finish reading the title.
An act to approve the revisions to the Administrative Rules and Regulations of the Student Financial Assistance Program, parenthesis SFAP.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on substitute bill number four oh two EC, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute bill number four oh two EC has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. Substitute bill number three two one.
Bill number three two one LS is substituted by the Committee on Criminal Justice, Public Safety, Youth, and Foreign Affairs, introduced by L.F. Casparbauer and others. An act to amend item D of section thirty-one oh one, of title sixteen, Guam Code Annotated, relative to allowing the use of out-of-Guam driver's licenses up to a period of one year.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on, uh, substitute bill number three two one LS, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute bill number three two one LS has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. Bill number three eight two.
Bill number three eight two, introduced by J.T. Wampat, E.B. Palacios, and others. An act to amend section three one two nine of title seventeen GCA relative to the inclusion of World War I veterans to receive an honorary high school diploma.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Bill number three eight two EC, fourteen yeas, zero nays. Bill number three eight two EC has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. And finally, Bill number three six one EC.
Bill number three six one LS, introduced by J.M.S. Brown and others. An act to amend section three four one zero three B of article one of chapter thirty-four of title ten, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Changing the Length of Pet Licenses.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes. Senator Casparbauer. Senator Klitsky. Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios. Senator Resfisio. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Ompinko. Senator Wampat.
The vote on Bill number three six one LS is fourteen yeas, zero nays. Bill number three six one LS has been duly passed by, may have been the Otsun listed on Guam. That, uh, exhausts third reading. Would you like to go back to the top of second reading and deal with that bill now, or do it tomorrow? What is the pleasure of the body, huh? Is it, what's in the voting file? Are there appointments in the voting file? Oh, we still have those. Oh, oh, my mistake, we still have appointments in the voting file. That we have to dispose of. Um, they are all of them, uh, commissioners, boards of directors, things of that nature. So in the interest of, uh, expediency, there would be nothing wrong with, uh, Speaker Ompinko getting up and making one big motion to approve all these, uh, nominations at one time, if he would care to do so.
Oh, I, I, I do make the motion, Mr. Speaker, provided, however, that the, um, the, the clerk would just name all of them individually, and then we can vote on it.
I'll tell you what, I'll do it, and it'll make it even faster. How's that sound?
I think that'd be much faster, yes.
Alright, uh, the, the motion is to vote, um, subject to my naming these individuals and what they're gonna be serving on, uh, in one motion, so, no objection to that motion to vote all at once. The names are as follows, Alfredo P. Carmona to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Rule Authority Board of Commissioners, Dr. Walter Chris Perez serves as a member of the University of Board, University of Guam Board of Regents, Dr. Filomena M. Cantoria to serve as a member of the Public Utilities Commission, Mr. Joseph M. McDonald to serve as a member of the Public Utilities Commission, Dr. Jorge Nelson to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors, Mr. Landon M. Nadler to serve as a member of the Jose Di Leon Goro Port Authority of Guam Board of Directors, Ms. Rosalia... Ms. Rosalia E. Ligón to serve as a member of the G M H A Board of Trustees. And Mr. Daniel L. Webb to serve as a member of the G M H A Board of Trustees. On that motion, is there any objection, without objection? Let the record show that all of these individuals have been unanimously confirmed with positions which we were appointed. Now, would you like to go back to second and dispose of that? Would someone like to make a motion to do so?
So, just may I say, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I move that the, that the body return to the second reading file.
Second reading, okay, we are, is there any objection to that motion? Right down to the top of second reading, on the matter of Bill number three hundred and forty-eight. On that bill.
So, just may I say, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, Bill three four eight, L S, is substituted by the Committee on Judiciary Government Operations and Reorganization and amended on the floor, be accepted.
On the motion except for purposes of discussion, without objection, so ordered.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill number three four eight, L S, is substituted by the Committee on Judiciary Government Operations and Reorganization and amended on the floor, be, um, placed in third reading, and I'd like to make a motion on that.
What is the motion you'd like to make?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that the, um, um, sponsorship of the bill read, um, number two, um, uh, Ray Tenorio and number three, Rony Rispishu.
On that motion? On that motion, objection, so ordered. On the main motion to place in third, well, objection, so ordered. Is there a motion to go down to third reading for the purposes of voting on the bill without engrossment?
Mr. Speaker, I move that the, um, body go down to the, um, third reading file for the purpose of, um, uh, voting on Bill three forty-eight is substituted and without the engrossment of the bill.
And that motion, is there any objection, without objection? We are now in third reading, on Bill number three four eight. Can the clerk read the title?
Bill number three four eight, L S, is substituted by the Committee on Judiciary Government Operations and Reorganization and amended on the floor. Introduced by L F Casper Bauer, Ray Tenorio, R. J. Rispishu, J M S and others. An act amended title seventeen G C A, chapter three, section thirty-one zero four A, relative to degree qualifications for the positions of superintendent and deputy, deputy superintendent of the Guam Public School System, and amend title seventeen, chapter sixteen, section sixteen A one zero three A, relative to qualifying colleges and universities as forward equivalents upon petition by superintendent applicants.
Roll call.
Senator Ogden. Senator Brown. Senator Calvo. Senator Benjamin Cruz. Senator Michael Cruz. Speaker Forbes.
Ungan.
Senator Casper Bar. Senator Klitsky. Senator Luhon. Senator Palacios. Senator Rispishu. Senator Tenorio. Speaker on pinko.
Ungan.
Senator Wampet.
On substitute bill number three four eight. The vote is fourteen yeas, zero nays. Substitute bill number three four eight has been duly passed by Minaminti Otzulisturunguan. We have exhausted everything in the third reading in the voting file. Do we have a motion to adjourn until two o'clock tomorrow afternoon? Two o'clock. Adjourn.
Okay, uh, Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn until two o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
On that motion, is there any objection? So, order, am I due? Is that satisfied, am I due today? Okay, shoot, so then we're going to adjourn until, uh, two o'clock tomorrow afternoon, subject to the motion, no objection, so ordered.